All right, then let's open the meeting of March 12th. First thing on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Dan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, reliving and just as well.
Thank you all. The agenda is nice and short tonight. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes. Everybody got their minutes in their packets? Three changes, again, nothing, not again because we're now on TV, but there's nothing substantial about the three changes. In the motion for item number three on the agenda just included the condition, the planting of evergreens, the condition just wasn't mentioned in the minutes. It is now, thank you Valerie. Item number five just inserted a detail that we were amending the rules and regulations. And finally, they're just added in, item number six added the junior in my name. So with that, if there are no questions regarding the minutes, is there a motion?
I'm approved minutes.
I second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, all opposed. Unanimously approved minutes. Item number three on the agenda is a new public hearing for 226 Main Street. And since we do not have a vice chair or a clerk, I guess Ms. Jacobs is going to be the acting clerk for March 12th, 2019. Take it away, Ms. Jacobs.
Legal notice for North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals. Notice is hereby being given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Joseph A. Montefort, trustee of property at 226 Main Street, map 041.0, parcel 0021, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R4 zoning district within the Machine Shop overlay district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-9.4, building after catastrophe. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 1:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Koch Jr., Esquire Chairman.
Thank you. And whomever's here for the applicant, if you would come on up. And this will be true for the entirety of the evening. Before you speak, would you kindly introduce yourselves, your names and affiliation or address, please?
My name is Joseph Montefort. I'm the owner of the property on 14 Carriage House Lane, Buxton, Massachusetts. And I'm ready to proceed.
You don't have to stand.
No?
Yeah, have a seat. We're all friends here.
I like this bit.
Until we get to public comment, and then we might have.
Yeah. I'll try to be quick so no one else comes. The, um, this building, as you know, was destroyed in the Columbia gas fires. The building was built in 1865 and has several nonconformities. The use is a four-unit residential building, which does not conform. The lot area is 9,130 square feet, as opposed to 12,005. The frontage is 68.18, as opposed to the 100 feet required. The right setback in one corner is 1.6 feet, as opposed to 15 feet, and the front setback is 10.7 feet, as opposed to 30 feet. I'd like to reference Plan, um, A1.0, if you have that in your packet. If you have the plan, you will see that the house is going to be built on the footprint of the existing foundation with one exception. Looking at the plan, on the driveway side, you'll see a little jog that sticks out. You probably can't read the dimensions of it, it sticks out 3.6 feet. The reason for that is that there is a stairway in the building that cuts across the building. And the stairway isn't to code. It's not to code because the rises are too high and the width of the stairs is too short. So instead of this configuration, we have to go to something like this, which takes up more room. And there's really no choice but to put that jog in there to accommodate that. This house is going to be vastly improved from what's there now. The house will retain one unique architectural feature of the house, which is an overlapping roof with decorative brackets that are up around the roof. And in fact, the existing house apparently was added to many years before I've owned it, and I have owned it for 30 years. And it was added to probably twice, which means that the roofline in the rear of the house is irregular and doesn't have the decorative features of the older 1865 house. The new house will have the features of that, the older house, all the way around the roof and have a consistent roofline. The house will again have four apartments. It will have two one-bedroom apartments on the first floor, and on the second and third floor, there'll be two two-bedroom apartments. The rooms of the one-bedrooms, there'll be three rooms, the four-bedroom, I mean, the two-bedrooms will have four rooms. The two-bedroom apartments will be on the second and third floor, meaning there'll be a room on the third floor that goes with each of the apartments. So they'll both be up and down. The house will have central air conditioning, it will have hardwood floors, it will have upgraded doors and windows. There'll be a fire alarm system within the house with fire sprinkles, sprinklers, and an alarm panel that goes directly to the fire department. The HVAC system will use no gas or oil. The house will be re-landscaped with a new lawn, new shrubs, new flowers, and it will be sprinkled. And there'll be a new fence along the driveway side, as the old fence has been destroyed by plows many times over. As I indicated, I've owned the house for 30 years. I have not been an absentee landlord. I have, with my family, cut the lawn every week. We rake the leaves every week. I've put in the windows with my, all the replacement windows with my sons in the house. We clean the apartments and paint them when we re-rent them. And the point of me saying that is I've been around the house a lot, and I know how the house works. And the way this house is set up works very well. The cars that are in the driveway have been limited for 25 of the 30 years that I've owned the property to six cars. Usually, if you look at the property, there's under four cars there, including weekends. Four to six people live in the house. I can't remember a time when there've been more than six. I don't think there ever has been. And generally, if you look at the house, it looks like any other house on Main Street, even though it has four units in it. And that's all I got.
So my first question is just a matter of curiosity. I've been sitting on the board for, I don't even know what it is, eight years or so, and I've never run across this provision, actually, to call town council in order to discuss it. How did you find the catastrophe provision in the code?
You have a woman in the building department that knows the code better than probably all the lawyers in town. And she went right to it.
That's terrific. Glad to hear it. Certainly, from my side of the table, it makes my job a whole lot easier when the code is actually applicable to an applicant.
Well, that's actually reflective of Chapter 48, Section 6 of the general laws, has that, repeats that provision. It powers the local towns and cities to do that.
And I had never seen, I hadn't seen the general laws provision either, so this is...
Happy to be a small.
Appreciate it.
Learn something here every day.
So Board can jump right in with questions?
So as far as I can tell, even with the slight addition to the outside, it does not, you're not changing any of the setbacks from what the house was previously?
No, even that change is actually within the 15-foot setback on that side of the building.
Right, yeah, because of the angle that it's at.
No, this is, this is the same thing, except for that jog.
Can I just ask, I'm just curious. I noticed, obviously, right after the explosion that your, you know, that your house was shut down. So is this one of the, is this an instance where the gas explosion occurred with the, your furnace in the basement? And there was an ensuing damage fire that came from that? Is that...
Yeah, what happened was is that the furnaces ignited, the gas ignited somehow in the basement. And this house had something called balloon frame construction. Balloon frame construction means that the studs went from the foundation right up to the roof. And what was left was a gap. The flame came from the burners and went right up the flue. It almost bypassed the first floor and burned through the roof and through the side of the building and destroyed an upper floor. In fact, one of the tenants, well, he ran out with his socks on. He was that close. But what happened was is that it was the framing that caused the damage. It was this framing that's been outlawed for years and years and years. There's no fire blockers, there's nothing like that. And so that caused what happened. But it was a, I had a dehumidifier right next to the burner that's plastic and wasn't even touched. It just went straight up through the, through the framing.
And so you had four tenants previous? Now you have not in your, with your work, you will then have the four tenants again?
It'll be, it'll be, yeah, it's going to be a four-unit building again.
Yeah, okay.
And this is a little bit more general interest than anything else, but, so what is going to be remaining of the original house when you build it back up? Will the foundation be there, or are you even pulling that out?
The foundation is, um, is feelstone and brick.
Yeah.
And the foundation is bowed.
Yeah.
And if you try to fix something like that, you dig into it and you just disturb the other feelstone.
Yep.
And before you know it, you've worked around it and you've redone it, and you've redone something that's inferior.
Yeah.
This will be a modern foundation with a cement floor rather than a dirt floor.
Sure. Okay.
But it'll go on the footprint of the existing foundation.
Right, right. No, I was just asking, just, I live in a house that burned down 30 years ago.
Yeah.
It was built in 1880, it burned down 30 years ago. They, they did keep the foundation, and so it's kind of this interesting hodgepodge of feelstone and some places concrete.
Yeah, yeah.
It's going to be demoed, yeah, yeah.
It'll be, they, they come in, they take the asbestos out, and then they come in and they knock it down.
And again, just for the edification of the Board, there are no addition, there is no additional, no variance is required. Where, all the setbacks were pre-existing, setback issues were pre-existing. And as, gosh, I've forgotten who pointed it out, but the only change in the, in the outline here is well within the existing setback on that side. So we're not here to discuss, well, we're happy to discuss it, but we're not making any determinations on that. The only determination, the only determination that we are making is that this is a four-unit building in a district for which that use is not allowed. It's pre-existing non-conforming use, and that's why we have this, this provision, the catastrophe provision, pre-existing non-conforming use. If it blows up, it's essentially just giving the Board the power to approve or deny in its wisdom. So again, we are just here, the hearing can be about anything, but the decision is only going to be about the use, whether or not the Board feels that it's appropriate to remain a four-unit building. That's all. I'm not verbalizing concern, I'm just identifying the issue, that's all. Any questions? Any additional questions for the applicant?
There's been, there's been four residents there as long as you have used it for rental properties?
Yes, four, has it, has it been four apartments ever since I've owned it?
Yeah.
Yes, certainly. And it appears that it was a very long time before me, because I bought it in 1987, and I've done a lot of work in the house over the years, and there's actually real two-by-fours behind some of the paneling that went in the 60s. And two-by-fours that are actually measuring by two-by-fours haven't been used in, forever. So I, I don't have a guess as to how long it's been, but it was many years before I bought it, not just, it wasn't, it wasn't prepared to sell, it was used that way for quite some time.
All right, well, if there's nothing further from the Board, then I'll, we'll just invite folks. Anyone from the gallery that wishes to be heard, kind of step up to the podium. Come on up. If you just introduce yourself, your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Craig Nodall. I live at 222 Main Street, right next door to Joe's apartments there. And Joe's been a wonderful neighbor. His tenants have always been, he seems to attract top-quality tenants. No complaints. I've lived there for 20 years since 1999 with my wife and my two kids. Kids play in the backyard, and again, no issues with Joe, and very happy with the way he conducts his, his property. And I'm very happy, you know, with the place, the current placement of the, the home, and I support his petition.
Brilliant. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Come on up.
Yeah, my name is Charles Janack. I live at 12 Garden Street, North Andover, sort of right, right behind him. And I've lived down there for over 50 years. And Joe's been very good. He's had no problems with anything. And the way the house is now, with parking on the driveway and everything, it's, it's perfect for us, because, you know, we sit out back there and we don't have to look at any kind of driveway or parking lot right behind our house, which could happen if it was, if the, if his petition wasn't allowed, you know? And I basically support his petition. And just like Greg said, he's always had good tenants and everything, never no problems or anything. He's been very good. And the way everything is, has been great for the past 50 years.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Come on up.
How you doing? Keith Barnard, 234 Main Street. I'm new to the neighborhood, but I do own multifamily properties in town. So Joe and I have had a few short conversations, because I'm moving into, it sounds like the opposite side of him, so that's my neighbor on the other side. I am in support of the project. The only proposal that I have is to shift, take the opportunity of the tragedy and shift the foundation of the property to be more centered and back onto the property. Obviously, my opinion of it is while you're doing it, obviously, it's a tragedy, it's a horrific event that took place, but my opinion of it is take the opportunity to benefit the lot size and the foundation in, in regards to the lot, to center it a little bit more within the lot, and set it back a little bit. But other than that, I am in support of the project.
Thank you very much.
Do I speak again?
Anyone? Did, let me give, nothing? Come on up. Come back up is what I mean.
The problem, if, if his house is moved over three feet, what will happen then is he won't be able to have any parking in the driveway to the side, because he'll take up the room. And he'll end up making a driveway parking area right behind his house, and the house will be back further. You know, I have a screen house in the backyard and a patio, and we sit out back there in the summer, and, and right now, we look and we see nice grass. But if everything is moved over, we're going to have a parking lot there with cars, headlights always coming in, shining into the screen house, and patio, and also right into our house, and the traffic. And then in the winter, the plows will be plowing all down there, and it'll, it'll, it just won't, it'll, it'll be miserable for us, you know? Because we'll smell all the exhaust, and when cars pull in at night, the radio going and everything like that. Right now, it's, it's the way he wants to rebuild it, it'll be just, the driveway is perfect for his parking, it causes no, no problems for either Greg or myself, but the other way, it will cause, it'll even cause problems for Greg, too.
Thank you.
As a practical matter, are we allowed to consider the setbacks for this?
Yeah, everything, in any application, everything is really on the table.
Okay. Guys, can you speak?
Absolutely, come on up.
First, I want to say hello to my new neighbor. I hope we get to meet again, under better circumstances. Sure. So as I mentioned, I have lived at 222 Main Street for 20 years. When I moved in there, 226 was where it was, and when Mr. Barnard, when you purchased your property, it was there as well. So anyway, I thought, what I think you don't understand is that it will negatively impact me to move that house. Right now, all the foot traffic and all the parking is on my side of the property. So I'll be, if that comes closer to me, there are several negative impacts, whereas on Mr. Barnard's side, he's fairly isolated. There's no exits and entrances, there's no parking over there. He's, he already is fairly isolated. On my side of the property line, we've taken measures, you know, so we have cars parking next to my property line. So we have a garage there to act as a buffer, the kids play set acts as a buffer, and other things we've done to act as a buffer. To move that closer would be problematic. They would probably defeat our buffering mechanisms, especially if the parking was to move to the back of the house. We have, we have nothing to shield that. My kids play back there. Instead of looking onto a lawn, as we see now, we're going to be seeing all the cars and the parking, and we'll need to make some, you know, some investments to try to overcome that, if even possible. A large concern would be to put asphalt in the back of the yard is going to create a runoff situation with the, the water. And I'm really concerned about that impacting my property. Again, my kids play in the backyard, we have lots of friends coming over to have water back there. I, I think would really be a big disruption. But the biggest point I want to make is that, over the summer, I had an array of 23 solar panels installed on my house. And that, 226 is on the sunny side of my house, and we had a solar survey conducted to optimize where to put the panels. And the ones on my roof, those are fine. But I have nine solar panels on my garage, so to move a structure closer to me could severely impact my investment. I'm expected to make about 300 bucks a month over the summer on these solar panels. And the ones in my garage consist of about 40% of my panels, and to lose access to those is going to severely impact me 100, 120 bucks a month potentially. I don't really know, you know, until the house moves, what the impact would be, but I'm really concerned about my investments, and I know it'd be nice to have it moved for you, but it would be, it would be terrible for me for the house to move closer to my house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to address that shortly.
Absolutely.
I was aware of Mr. Barnard's concern, and that he was going to come here and bring this up. I had Greg Smith here, who is my architect, draw up some renditions of what would happen if the house were to be rotated any way. If you look at the plan, again, A1.0, just notice where the, the rear steps are. And any rotation of this house, or any movement at all, moves it into the driveway. This driveway comfortably, at one time, had eight cars in it. It can, it had fit six comfortably. If this driveway is made useless for parking, it means that I have a big parking lot in the rear. It means that as opposed to approximately 2,150 square feet of paving, I have twice that amount. Essentially, what you, in looking at that plan, you know, I'll show you what his rendition is. And there are a lot of ways of doing this, but it basically comes out the same. If the driveway can't be used, the parking has to go in the rear, it's the only other place it can go. If it goes in the rear, this place no longer looks like every other house in Main Street. It looks like an apartment building with a parking lot in the back. So essentially, what happens is, there is, very little, if this is moved to the back, and the parking can't happen here, it has to happen here. So all of this is lawn, and it becomes paved. Because we have a narrow driveway, we have a 60-foot drive or snowplow to make, which is a lot of snow. I can tell you, if you ever saw the fence that's by here, it's all destroyed from the snowplows. The snowplow is not going to make this, even if it's the most capable driver, without doing some damage, because they hit an ice, and the snowplow gets driven off the side. You'd need two, because you're not able to, if you had only one, you wouldn't be able to do the corners with the snowplow. And that would eliminate some of the parking. So this is not a good idea at all. It's not good for the neighbors, it's not even good for the man who's advocating it, because he'd get a driveway. So I would just, I would just tell you that basically, if you go around here, this, this lot line gets close, but really, in terms of, if you look at the spacious, this is Mr. Barnard's house. The closest point, these houses are over 20 feet apart. You believe in the lot line, but that's not where the house is. As I said, I mean, I think the plan itself, I don't think it's a good idea. I think it'd be fair to the neighbors who relied upon the placement of this house for a long period of time to change it to the difference.
Is the driveway currently, is that asphalt, or is that dirt?
It's asphalt.
Okay.
The, the exact numbers, the difference in the asphalt would be double. The driveway is about 2,150, and that part, the, the second scenario, more than doubles the asphalt. It just pretty much eliminates the lawn in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, two. It also increases the runoff and adds a whole bunch of other issues to where it doesn't exist now, those issues. So we're just really replacing kind of the existing condition as far as runoff and all those values aren't changing from what's there now, so.
And the driveway is entered from Main Street?
Yes.
Yes.
I feel like I might as well.
Just to, I, I think I, not that it matters at this point, but the conversation that Joe and I had might have been premature to him actually having the plans done. I have not seen these plans, and I, I didn't realize Joe's opinion of shifting the house just went the way that it did. The conversation that him and I had two to three months ago in his driveway was a little bit different, along the lines of that we both kind of envisioned it possibly being a good idea, but by the sounds of what everyone's saying, I'm gonna stand up, I'm gonna stand up and tell you guys that it sounds to me like, leave it as is, and that's the best option.
I appreciate that thought. If you hadn't seen the plan, do you want to take a look at what was, what was shown?
I mean, I'm a stand-up guy. I just maybe had a different vision, and I thought that it would be easier to do it, to shift it.
Yeah.
But given everyone's concerns, I'm fine with being the honest neighbor that I think you guys should support in this, is.
Thank you. Last, last call. Is there anything that you'd like to say in close? The next thing that we will do is close the public kind of hearing element of this, then, then the Board will deliberate, and assuming the applicant wants us to go forward, we will, we will vote on it. So if there's anything else you'd like to say that perhaps we missed, or something you want to amplify?
No, I think, I think you've heard everything I have to say. No, I, I think, I think you've heard everything I have to say.
All right, thank you then. Is there a motion to close the public, public comment?
I second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? No, public comment being closed. Now the board shall deliberate. Does anyone want to take the lead?
Sure. Slam dunk.
Good, civil body.
Yeah, I mean, I went by it, it's boarded up now, can't stay that way. Gonna put something new up, it's not gonna change the footprint, it's gonna keep the neighbors happy. It's been, as you say, the issue is four units, it's been four units for over 30 years. I see no reason that we should change that, so, sounds, sounds good to me.
I think under different circumstances, where if this had been, you know, a new purchase and the new owner decided that they wanted to tear the house down and build a new house on top of it and it was just the, the time to do that and then I think it would be worth discussing how we want to position the house and the property. But this is in response to a disaster, this was not within someone's control, he did not choose to, you know, have his house burned out. And so I think it is a relatively straightforward thing to say, let's bring it back to what it was and he is bringing it back even better than what it was. So I think that is, for everybody around, gonna be a plus.
Anything over here?
Nothing.
All right, the, the only thing that I will add is, this is another example of, you know, moments that I'm grateful that we have, that we live in the community that we do because you have, you have a project that was affected by a, you know, a nationally-known tragedy. Fortunately, no loss of, loss of life or limb here, but you're making something good out of it, which is I, which is, I think, a testament, A, to, to your, to your ownership and to the community's willingness. The fact that you got three neighbors to take time out of their lives to come and speak for you for a project that could be impactful, I mean, this, this parking thing is, is an impactful concept. I would tend to agree that if given an opportunity such as this, and it, it sounds so gross to call a tragedy an, an opportunity, but if there's an opportunity to improve the zoning, positioning, the, the number of setback issues that we have, the amount of relief required on the lot, then, you know, let's take a look at it. And it's, at, at a glance, I was, I thought it was darn near impossible to move the footprint of the building. I, I get, I get the ask, I absolutely get the exploration of the idea, but the execution of the idea, not just in the plan, but in the fact that if you move the foundation three feet, then there's, as, as with anything that's old, you don't want to hit, knock on the walls too hard. You don't know, we don't necessarily know what's under there, we don't necessarily know how the utilities are going to act if you move the foundation three feet. So I, I would love the idea of exploring the concept, but it's pretty, for me, pretty easy to reject it almost out of hand as, as not a, not a great idea. There could have been, my, my suspicion is that there could have been ways to reconfigure the parking such that it didn't require, you know, both sides to be paved, but I absolutely, I, I get that this is probably like the, this is the worst-case scenario of what we would have to do. And that is just, that's just awful. So with that, I don't have any objections whatsoever to this, I agree with the slam duck characterization, I appreciate that there have been conversations that you've had with neighbors prior to coming before us tonight. It always greases, greases the skids so that things can, can be a little bit more complete, I guess, complete and transparent. Certainly makes it easier from the board's side because when folks come to the, come to a hearing and they, there are, conflict is the wrong word, friction or differences that haven't been aired out before folks up here, then the board is kind of put in a position of, oh, well, now we've got to try to figure, figure this out. But in this case, you had the conversations in the neighborhood, you have approached a solution to the conversations in the neighborhood in advance and shown that, you know, we don't necessarily have to sit here and go around Robin Hood's barn trying to figure out how to make everybody as complete, I guess, as they would, as they would want to be under the circumstances. So I'll, I'll quit prattling on, I just, I appreciate an applicant that comes in prepared. So I'll just, maybe I'll just say that to you directly, thank, thank you for coming in and thanks to the folks for coming in and verbalizing their opinions one way or the other. So perhaps with that, perhaps, is there a motion? I guess you'd make the motion, wouldn't you?
I've never done the motion for the approved, but...
Well, it's simple, a motion to approve and then you get to read it again.
I get to read the whole thing all over again?
Uh-huh. Well, except for this part, you don't have to read this part.
Just this part?
Yeah, you don't have to, you don't have to read that part either.
Just the first two parts, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You're done the affirmative, right?
We're, you're moving to approve, yes.
Okay. So motion to approve?
The petition.
The petition of Joseph A. Montfort, trustee for property at 226 Main Street, map 041.0, parcel 0021, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R4 zoning district within the machine shop overlay district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant, pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-9.4, building after catastrophe.
And as I was hearing, just want to make sure, ensure that there are no, no conditions are being attached to the motion, is that correct?
No conditions are being attached to the motion. Do I have to put these in?
The, the, yes, in accordance with...
In accordance with the 226 Main Street reconstruction, pages A0.1, plot plan of land located in North Andover, done by, prepared by Sullivan Engineering Group, dated January 21st, 2019, A0.2, A1.0, A1.1, A1.2, A1.3, A1.4, A1.5.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded and Frank is not voting, is that correct?
Right.
Frank is excluded, so we will just go left to right.
Aye.
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 I'm an aye as well, so that is five, then the petition is approved. They've got a decision, what do we got to do, in 10 days, something like that?
No, we're not going to lie, something is flawed on.
Tomorrow.
I go home.
All right, that is it, you are approved, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Pleasure. Next on the agenda is miscellaneous, there are two notices from Chappa regarding rights of the town to buy land. There is also, there is no action required by the board, there's also no action required by the board on, gentlemen, if you could, this, the, gentlemen, we're continuing here, Sophie, conversation outside, thank you. We also received a communication regarding a matter that we heard last month, 75 Waverly Road, from an annoyed neighbor and citizen who encourages us to be more careful with our approvals. I don't have anything else, our next, here, our next...
Actually, I didn't think you were going to have one, but we do.
And it's April?
So it's April 9th and it's going to be, they're gonna be filing on Thursday morning, but it's bulder, like, and the hospital, the bank.
All right. So, I'm sorry, April, we come...
I think it's April 9th, though.
April 9th.
Yeah, that's the 9th.
I just want all the people at home to get their tickets in advance, that's why I wanted them to know the date.
Yeah.
Here.
Oh, don't worry, they will.
Is everyone here?
Oh, it's there.
Oh, it's here, yeah.
You're here.
And they'll let you know, they have, they have filed yet, but...
So that's the only agenda at this point in time?
Yeah, no one else is...
And it'll be a long night.
Everyone's quiet. I said every...
They're very quiet.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I mean, there was second, you talked, there's just no applications that's coming in, so...
All right, then, I think that we are at the close of business, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, we are adjourned. Thank you.